Call this meeting to order on February 5th, 2024 at 6:17. When everyone join me in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Command?
Here.
The flag is here, the sonic, the boot, Mr. Flower?
Here.
So we are not going to approve the minutes tonight. I hoped we would be able to, but there's too many to do, I'm sorry. So we will do those at the next possible time. Are there any citizens' comments? Any other things that we will be discussing? Any questions? No? Okay, so we have some that are for second readings. So we'll start with that.
Ordinance 0324, an ordinance declaring city vehicles are for on-duty business use only and requiring those vehicles to be parked on city property when not in use. Whereas vehicle use, maintenance, insurance, fuel, and equipment are major factors in expenditure and appropriations of funds for the city of Nelsonville. And whereas granting employee benefits to the city council's sole authority and required by ordinance, now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio as follows: All city vehicles shall be used for business use only and employees will not be issued a vehicle to drive home excluding the chief of police and the fire chief. Vehicles when not in use for official business shall be parked on city property excluding parking at repair facilities to make repairs or install equipment. The police chief and fire chief may be issued a vehicle to take to their residence for responding to emergencies or to work or scheduling needs provided their residences within 15 miles of the city of Nelsonville. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading, second day of February 2024.
Are there any comments on that, according to our ordinance?
Okay, yeah.
Could we please turn all the phones off?
Yes, actually, I do have a question in regards to that amendment of the ordinance.
Um.
On the 25th of the 26th, when you had suspects come onto the lot and steal scrap metal and your lot was open for that day of service and you had the street department chase those suspects down, you had all the vehicles still on the lot, those vehicles could have been entered. What about all these officers who have all their equipment in these vehicles? And these officers spent their own personal money to supply their own equipment for these vehicles? Plus, all of the equipment that are already in those vehicles that you purchased for these vehicles? But you're going to put all of your eggs in one basket and leave them set on this lot for that to happen? Is that smart? Or if you're having a space decision based on all of this? Or have you followed the Department of Justice recommendations? Or 90% of the other departments, do you take their vehicles home for safety purposes?
Could you give us the name of the towns that you think?
90% of the Department of Justice, they offer you.
And I said, can you give us the name of the towns that you think?
It's too many for us. And you cannot compare to the size of Columbus because the city does not match the size of Columbus.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I don't know how to say that.
Madam President.
Madam President. I think it's best if we take comments and then respond to them. That has been the practice in the past. And I let everybody that wants to speak on the issue speak on the issue, but I don't think it's the best that we respond to comments.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I think councilman wants to anyway. That's their problem, isn't it? But I'm just telling you what the practice is there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. So outside of, you know, the extra security and convenience and all that, there's been numerous studies that show that having officers that take home vehicle is going to improve officer maintenance on the vehicle, cleanliness, any reports of damage. There's just tons of other benefits as well, more so than just driving it off.
Thank you.
Maybe they adopt.
We have a council discussion.
Um, council discussions?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to include the service director as essential personnel. I'll put that motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, we can move on now.
Any discussion?
Anyone wants to discuss it?
The service director is Jason?
It's the service director person, uh, position.
It's currently Jason, yes, currently, yes. Well, shall we put mileage? Shall we put the distance on that?
I believe this is, um, and the ordinance is 15 miles.
15 miles, so we should do that with the service director also?
It would be part of this ordinance. But the service director, I believe, is essential personnel as much as the police chief and fire chief.
Mr. Clement, do you know his response on, on these water breaks in 19? Do we have?
Yes, he's on call 24/7.
But does he come?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
I was there with him for the four breaks that we had. We had five breaks three weekends ago. He responded to each and every one of those. We decided to split it up so that he could get some rest, so we could watch the crew.
I see.
And then the following weekend, we had a slow storm and he was on call 24/7 and assisted. And he's worked out really well.
Madam President. I would oppose amending the ordinance because it takes it back to first reading. And if we want to make a change, so you're on for the service director, we can by a separate ordinance. But I think that we've hashed this part out long enough and we need to vote on it as a dish.
Okay, okay.
Now, there is a motion and a second on the table.
What were we discussing? It says, I've, I've.
I understand, I'm just pointing out.
Well, we understand. I was just going to ask Susan, she's calling.
Well, I have one more.
Oh, you're still, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's been proven that the service director taking his vehicle home has lowered overtime drastically. So, thank you.
Um, anyone else? Uh, Mr. Taylor?
On the motion to amend?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
It's when? No. It's fine? No. Your flowers?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No. Maybe adopt.
Second. Now, is there discussion on the original motion?
Let's have the press talk.
I mean, we have discussed it at length, but if you need to say anything else?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. So do we currently have a policy on vehicles?
Not a written one, no.
So there is no exhibit A attached to this ordinance? So we're going to pass the ordinance first and then write a policy?
The ordinance explains the policy that's adopted by council.
Previously, there was a lot of questions concerning the policy that was in place.
There was never an official policy by council and council is the only one that can grant employee benefits.
Well, you're calling it a policy, which is implemented by the city manager, and then you're calling it a benefit. So it's like you're kind of just using terms.
Well, no, it's, it's, it is an employee benefit. And if you use the IRS figures of 67, not 60, 67.
65.
67, it's 67, I just bow my back. 67 cents amount. And if you use those figures, and I made the mileage myself, it comes to pretty close to $6,000 benefit.
Well, in executive session, you said $5,000.
Well, we are not supposed to speak about whatever was said in executive session.
No, he said as long as it's not legal.
I, well, yeah, as you can say, I said 5,000.
You're a lawyer.
Madam President, I had more correct?
I just said close to 6,000. The actual figure, I think, was 5,885, figuring the mileage. But I had figured one of the mileage is wrong, two miles short. So it's close to $6,000 is an honest figure. And that doesn't include the price of having 11 or 12 cars and putting Mark 3s in them and paying the insurance on 11 or 12 cars. And I, that's why I don't think it's, I don't think it benefits the citizens of the city of Nelsonville. And I, I, we got a motion to.
I would just clarify, Mr. Smith, that the city manager is ultimately responsible and makes all the decisions for all assets within the city. And vehicles would be an asset, so that's a policy, not a benefit in my opinion.
Well, the city, the city charter also says the city manager will obey every ordinance and enforce them. So we'll have that argument at a later date, but we have a motion to adopt.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second on adopting the ordinance that specifically says the vehicles stay here.
Does city council allow to make this one that's under the city charter?
Yes.
Because city charter says that the council cannot make any policy that affects any departments.
Could you lift a copy of the charter?
President, we have, we have funds to debate and we have had a.
We have debated this to death, so I'm going to just ask for order so that we can go ahead and put the vote through.
Let's go ahead, so if we have to vote.
Order, please. Mr. Command?
Could we state the motion again?
Motion to adopt the order. No.
It's when? Yes. It's fine? Yes. Flowers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
So the ordinance passes.
Point of order, so this is effective immediately?
No, it takes 30 days. There's no emergency clause on it, so none of the effect for 30 days, 30 days? Yeah, that's 30 days.
So do you have a question? If, if any of the officer's equipment is stolen out of the vehicles while it's here on the premises, um, who's going to compensate for that?
That's a theoretical question, which obviously cannot be answered.
Actually, I mean, you've already had that from a premise, so my question is if this does occur?
Yeah, Madam President.
I'm sorry, we have already voted on that, so we need to move on to the next ordinance, Susan.
And my next question is what bias do you have against police department?
Can we please have order? Can I please have order? Susan has been interrupted now three times while she is trying to do her job. So order, please, we are moving on to the next ordinance, Susan.
This is ordinance 0424, an ordinance raising the salary for the position of Nelsonville Fire Chief to $79,000 per year. Whereas the current fire chief has 22 years of experience with the Nelsonville Fire Department. And whereas the fire chief has developed many programs in the fire department that have provided emergency medical service and reduced over time to a very minimal amount. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio as follows: The salary of the position of Nelsonville Fire Chief shall be raised to $79,000 per year. This ordinance shall be effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the second day of February 2024.
Any discussion on this one? This is covering the fire chief's salary. No, council?
I think over the years, I've been here, just a few years longer than Harry has been here as chief, that we've had vast improvements, we've had EMS service when the EMS is out of town. We've had numerous grants that Harry has developed. He had, he has a certification in almost everything you want to talk about. And that with his experience, he deserves this, this level of pay.
I agree. Anyone else?
Yes, Harry, thank you so much for your service. I do have a question. So we're at 79,000 now. There will be an in-kind raise coming shortly. And then another raise 10 months from now. Has the finance committee estimated where that will take the level of pay at that point?
Uh, we have not yet.
Well, we did ask.
But we will. We did ask Mr. Sappington while we were in the finance committee and he said that it would.
Okay, so other supervisors, I assume, will be considered for raises also when that point comes?
When the point comes, it will be a discussion that we'll have, just like we had with this one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Um, motion? Motion?
Motion to adopt?
A second. Was that right? Okay. It's when? Yes. It's sonic? Yes. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Why do you hate the fire department?
Order, order!
Damn, no.
Dan, order, please. So the ordinances for raising the chief's salary has passed.
They got effective day, 30 days from today.
Exactly. The next ordinance that we had scheduled was an ordinance accepting Gary Hunter's counteroffer to sell.
Motion to table.
Um, second, we'll table it indefinitely to be renewed again at another time. It's sonic? Yes. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
He's what? Yes. So that will be taken indefinitely as of today. The next ordinance, uh, is an ordinance codifying Nelsonville's City Council's January 27, 2024 motion and vote to remove Jonathan Rowe as Nelsonville City Attorney. Susan, it's all right, they say vote.
And this is ordinance 1024, an ordinance codifying Nelsonville City Council's January 22, 2024 motion and to vote to remove Jonathan Rowe as Nelsonville City Attorney. Whereas Jonathan Rowe signed a temporary contract for December 2023 to provide legal services as Nelsonville City Attorney during the month of December 2023. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, Article 4.08, Section 11, grants the city council the power to remove the city attorney. Whereas Nelsonville City Council, during a properly noted council meeting on January 22, 2024, had a majority vote to remove Jonathan Rowe as city attorney. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio as follows: Jonathan Rowe is removed from the position of city attorney. The city manager is directed to pay all outstanding invoices for the legal services provided by Jonathan Rowe up to January 22, 2024. And he is thanked for his services as city attorney, duly enacted by council on second reading the 12th day of February 2024.
Do I need to change the date?
Madam President, I have a question.
We're on first reading, correct?
Just a moment.
Oh, it is, yes, okay. Okay, so this will be on second reading, the second day, February 2024.
No, um, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Oh, it was just, it was first reading, it was the first page.
No, it is the first thing. Um, and I apologize, we did not introduce it, so.
I'll, I'll introduce the order.
Thank you.
If anybody want to make Susan read it again?
I'll read it for you, Susan.
No, good.
You're good?
Madam President, I have a question. Was this the, is this the vote based on my, my motion during the last meeting?
No, it was a vote based on my motion.
Your motion, okay.
In which we voted, um, to no longer employ Mr. Rowe.
Okay, and who wrote this ordinance?
I wrote it.
You wrote it, okay. And which attorney reviewed it?
I contacted my attorney, my attorney contacted the highest Supreme Court today and asked the question as a council member if I was allowed to write ordinances. And the response from the director of, uh, I'm trying to remember his name, he was the person in charge of unlicensed practice of law. And he plainly told my attorney that as a member of council, I was certainly allowed to write legislation. And, uh, anybody that wants to call the Supreme Court and ask that question for themselves. But there is no requirement that, there is no requirement that an ordinance be reviewed by attorney.
Okay, so quick question then, so what was your attorney's name for the record then?
My attorney's name for the record is on your business.
Oh, okay, okay. And he didn't, the Supreme Court, they didn't reference anything? They didn't reference?
If you want to get the same opinion, you're welcome to call the Supreme Court, not to the office.
Just asking if there was one. There wasn't, he didn't state some, like a number or ordinance or.
No, he just told my, he just told my attorney that as a member of the legislative body, you are, it is not the practice of law to offer ordinances and that you're allowed to do it, so.
Mr. Smith is correct with one caveat, our insurance company will not back any wrong decision being made from that ordinance.
This is not a wrong decision.
No, I'm just saying, just point of order, I'm just telling you. You can write all the ordinances, but in case there's some sort of a mistake and we have to pay out a settlement, the insurance company will not do it.
I would, Madam President, I would motion to table it then until it's reviewed by an attorney so we don't wind up into a situation where council members become liable for ordinances.
Um, no, I don't think that we need to table this particular ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Uh, on discussion on the table, I would like to say that when we heard Mr. Rowe, Mr. Rowe did not disclose to council that he had a conflict interest with, with representing a member of council. Now, he couldn't say the name. But just like when we started to go into the executive session to, to discuss Gary Hunter, Mr. Rowe stood up and said, well, I have a conflict.
Correct.
So when, so when we was hiring him, Mr. Rowe didn't stand up and say, I have a conflict.
No, he did not.
Now, you at one point asked me if it was, be possible that if we contacted my attorney, Dan Close, and asked him if he could be our law director. And my response to you is you can contact him, but I could never vote for him because it would violate the ethics laws of, of the state of Ohio to vote for him.
Correct.
So when we voted to hire Jonathan Rowe on the December contract, Corey Taylor did not disclose to council that Jonathan Rowe was his personal attorney.
That's actually not true, he's not my personal attorney.
Well, you said that he represented him.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say he repre. No, I didn't actually. I did, he did not represent me, he represents, he represents a seller. He doesn't represent me.
Well, you, you, it was your statement.
No, it wasn't. If you're gonna, if you're gonna say it's my statement, then you should get it accurate.
Order, please, order.
You should be accurate.
Order.
What I'm saying is that had I known that Mr. Rowe and Corey Taylor had a relationship, I would have voted no on hiring him in the first place.
I agree.
And I, I think it's impossible that having that relationship that Corey Taylor voted for. And I think that we need to adopt this motion and we, are this ordinance and we need to adopt it as fast as possible.
Thank you. So now.
We do have a, we do have a motion to table one of them.
Correct, we have a motion to table on the floor, so we will be voting on the fact of the motion. Unless there is any other comments.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Uh, we are tabling this motion 1024, is that correct?
No. No.
How do we table?
Corey wants to table it. Uh, it was second then, so we need to vote.
But, but it's the motion by Jonathan.
Yes, yes. Um, good, anyone else? No? Okay.
Am I not due?
Of course.
My question is, is you, Mr. Smith is chastising the city attorney uh, for not representing him and, or going into council with him. When he had a lawsuit out against the city.
Madam President, there's a non-disclosure agreement with.
Dad, I'm sorry, we will not be discussing that right now.
Well, I'm not discussing what the lawsuit is, I'm just saying, Mr. Smith is known common knowledge have lawsuits out against the city. And he was representing the city, so he theoretically could not go in and be with Mr. Smith when he's saying anything, because it could be held against him as an attorney. So you're taught, you're chastising for doing his job.
I'm going to have to ask for order so that we can continue the work, okay? Uh, Susan, would you please call?
On tabling.
On the tabling, yes.
Mr. Flower?
So if we table this, we don't vote on it, right?
Right.
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
It's when?
No.
It's sonic?
No.
Motion to adopt?
I would like to ask a question. So currently, we do not have a law director, correct?
That is correct.
And we will.
We do.
No, we do not.
I can hire a law director every 30 days at my discretion. You don't have to confirm him, but I will not run this city without a law director.
You can make it. You know what you could do, Tom? You could hire somebody else and we will probably agree with it.
Well, go ahead, find me somebody, you can find me somebody.
We are working on that as we speak.
Well, but okay, but as we speak, I have to have a law director each and every day to operate this, so.
And we will have one, but not Mr. Rowe.
Until you find me a replacement, it will be Mr. Rowe.
Well, you will have to pay him out of your own pocket. Mr. Rowe is not the city attorney. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to call order.
You can call order.
And.
I still have.
One more time.
I still have the floor.
Actually, she was getting ready to call.
I still have.
Okay, go ahead.
So when you say we have a plan, actually, only the city manager can recommend an attorney.
That's correct. I will, listen, Madam President?
Yes.
If you look at Section 605 of the charter, it gives the city council the ability to heart special counsel in place of the city attorney. And that's, no, in place of the city attorney.
Don't think so. Very good.
You don't think so?
I have to have.
Mr. Pongjammy, order, please.
I am in order, I have to have an attorney to run the city.
Find somebody other than Jonathan Rowe, a whole bunch of them.
Okay.
One last time. Can we please have order so that Susan can call a roll?
Wait, wait, we need a second on the motion to adopt.
Wait, wait, we need a second on the motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, thank you.
It's okay.
Yes, actually, this is the first reading, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's the first reading, I'm sorry too.
Okay, so it's second reading, it's, yeah.
The second reading will be done at the next available opportunity, okay?
I have a question. Why is the Parks and Recreation Committee discussing hiring Jonathan Rowe tomorrow?
That's an excellent question.
Excellent.
That I would love to know myself.
Madam President?
Sir?
It's not on the call.
It is not on the agenda.
It's not on our call tonight, so you can ask her after the meeting, but during the meeting, we can only discuss things that were on the special meeting table.
Thank you for the question.
Who's on the meeting, you or Mr. Smith? Because we have to keep giving you directions on what to do? I'm just a question.
I'm gonna answer it if you give me a moment. This is my very first meeting.
Yes.
Clearly, I am learning the process, as you would at any job when it's your first day. Greg has had this job for some time, he knows the procedure, he is simply helping. Until I learn the procedure on my own, and I don't think that there's anything wrong with that.
Well, it gives me the perception that you guys have already discussed what your agendas are outside of the council meetings.
The agendas, along with all the ordinances, were sent to each individual council member. So, everyone had the information ahead of time, could look at it, could make their decisions. That's all I can say, so we need to move forward.
All I'm saying is, the perception is, is that you guys are meeting.
Order, sir, order, please.
Madam President, I would like to say, you are correct, this is your first meeting. I have sat in that chair. And it is difficult, so I would ask for a little leeway in that part. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Somebody does.
Anyone want to introduce this next one, the ordinance on setting a dollar amount?
Oh, congratulations.
Okay, I'll say. Thank you.
An ordinance setting a dollar amount where a commission is required by ordinance to make any purchase over ten thousand dollars. Whereas the state of Ohio has changed the bid requirement for purchases of seventy-five thousand dollars. Whereas seventy-five thousand dollars is a large amount of money for a small city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville as follows. All purchases which exceed ten thousand dollars must be first authorized by ordinance. Utility payments to operate city property are excluded from this requirement. Do it enacted by council on second reading the twelfth day of February, two thousand twenty-four.
This is the first reading. So, any comments on the first reading?
I, I have a question, so did Mr. Smith write this one as well? Did he write this ordinance as well?
Yes, he did.
Yes, I did.
Okay, I would motion we table it until we can have it reviewed by attorney. I'll say.
I guess. On the motion to table. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
No.
Ms. Sonnen? Ms. Sonnen? She's beside. Oh, okay. Mr. Flowers?
Mr. Smith has.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, on Taylor.
Okay.
Three to three is decided, it'll have to be re-introduced.
The motion fails.
Well, you're right, Dan, the motion fails because of three to three. Now, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
I do have a question.
Introduce for sure.
I'm sorry.
It's introduced on the second.
I believe we already have an ordinance on the books concerning this, and I think we need to look and find what that is. I don't know, I don't recall the amount, but I believe this ordinance is already on the books. So, we truly need to look and find that, make sure.
Greg, I tried to find it, I couldn't find it. I had all the ordinances from, it was clear back before Sue was the auditor. She sent out a, a desk, all the ordinances, and I searched it, I couldn't find it, and I looked for it for a long time.
I'm not opposed to this, I would though like to make sure that we don't have one.
We're all press rating anyway. Yeah, the motion's held to table, I'm press rating. Thank you, Dan.
I'm getting tired, because we gotta be careful on having two.
I don't believe there is another one. But if you find it, in one second reading, let me know. Okay. First to go. Somebody did. Do I introduce her?
Resolution, I, I motion we table.
It's first to second for that.
Second. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty-two ninety-five will be indefinitely tabled, and we will look at it again at another time. Okay, any other comments?
If we're true with all the ordinances, we're obligated to adjourn because anything we do has to be on, on a special meeting.
You're right, it's a special meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you for all comments.